Good evening, Chair. Calls are ordered. Legislative session day 22-022. Please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All heads bow. Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for another day. We ask that, before we go to bed tonight, Lord, we ask that we, that you prepare us for tomorrow and soften our hearts, allow us to kiss our loved ones, and never take one second of our lives for granted, because tomorrow is not promised. Now bless our country and our county, and allow us to work towards a more better union, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations. We have none. Counsel at this time will act as the zoning board of appeals and return back to legislative session thereafter. Agenda number five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Case number 5960, John Whitney Allen. On September 6, 2022, we heard a final argument on this case, 5960. May I have a motion, please?
Counsel President.
Councilman Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion to uphold the zoning examiner's ruling.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. It's been moved and seconded to uphold the decision recommended by the zoning examiner. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Giannigordano.
Aye.
Mr. Schrude.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Buella.
Aye.
There being seven votes in affirmative, zero in a negative, the decision to uphold the zoning hearing examiner's decision is approved. Agenda item number six, special presentations. We have none. Seven approval of minutes, zoning appeal case number 5960, John Whitney Allen, Whitney Allen, I'm sorry. Legislative day 22-021, September 6, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Counsel President, excuse me, Vice President Wagner, please read in resolutions 022-22 into the record for introduction.
Resolution number 022-22, introduced by Councilmember Wagner. A resolution by the county council waiving the five-year waiting period contained in local government article section 4-416 of the Annotated Code of Maryland in order to permit property consisting of approximately 9.062 acres annexed by the city of Aberdeen, which is currently zoned Hartford County's Ag Agricultural District in Perren's. Zoning classification to be zoned under the city of Aberdeen's Integrated Business District in Perren's, IBD. Zoning classification. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, October 11, at 6:30 p.m. in these council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Again, agenda number nine, introduction of bills. Council Vice President, please read these in.
Bill number 22-2023, introduced by Council President Vincenzo to request the county executive an active repeal and reenact with amendments, section 29-1, Hartford County Sheriff's Office Pension Plan of Chapter 29, Hartford County Sheriff's Office Pension, to add a deferred retirement option program by the council, September 13, 2022. Introduced red first time, order posted on public hearing scheduled for October 11, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. Bill number 22-024, introduced by Councilmember Giannigordano. An active repeal and reenact with amendments, the definition of daycare center in section 267-4, definitions of Article 1, standards of chapter 267, zoning of the Hartford County Code as amended, to provide that a daycare center may include a kindergarten as a supplementary use and generally relating to zoning by the council, September 13, 2022. Introduced red first time, order posted, and public hearing scheduled on October 11, 2022, at 6:30 p.m.
And then bill 22-022. Yeah. And I don't think I have it. You got it? Thank you.
Bill number 22-022, an act introduced by Council President Vincenzo to request the county executive an active repeal and reenact with amendment, section 123-46.5, tax credit for elderly individuals and veterans of Article 2, real property tax credits of chapter 123, finance and taxation of the Hartford County Code as amended to expand the definition of an eligible individual, to include active-duty retired or honorably discharged members of the military with disabilities and those individuals surviving spouse, to provide a definition to the term disability, to increase the maximum number of years an individual may be granted the tax credit, to increase the maximum assessed value of the dwelling eligible for the tax credit, and generally relating to property tax discounts and credits by the council, September 13, 2022. Introduced red first time, order posted, and public hearing scheduled for October 11, 2022, at 6:30 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Counsel President.
Mr. Johnson.
Point of order. I asked to be a cosponsor on this particular bill, and I don't see my name on this bill, so I would like to be a cosponsor on this bill.
Very good. We'll, we'll talk with the administration and see that that happens.
Thank you.
We all want to do it. Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
No, Counsel President.
Agenda items number 10 through 14. We have no business this evening.
I do have a point for new business, if you would, please.
Yes.
Under new business, I propose this council amend the council rules of procedure to remove the requirements to openly state one's home address when recognized to address the council under comments from attending citizens and public hearings.
I'll second that.
It has to be introduced, it has to stay for a week, and it's contained in several sections. So it would be better if I actually draft it, the amendments, so everybody has it front of them, what they're actually going on, where they're removing it from.
If I may, we've got a motion, a second on the floor. If council members want to discuss it, there's no reason why we couldn't, and then we see where it goes from there, and you can draft it up after that.
These rules may be amended by majority vote of the council in office at any regular session on notice of the amendment proposed at a session at least seven calendar days prior. So that's why I said you have to let it hang out there for a week.
Right. So I would propose that you let Charlie write it up, and we'll bring it back out.
And forego discussion this evening? So then you want me to withdraw my motion and second?
Please.
And we'll look forward to coming back?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you withdraw?
Withdrawn.
Thank you. So I'll skip 15. Agenda number 16, business from council members. Mr. Johnson.
Counsel President, only thing I have to say tonight is is that just two days ago was the anniversary of 9/11, and 3,000 of our, of our citizens were killed on that day. So I just want to remind everyone, you know, from the sound of my, with the sound of my voice, that can hear the sound of my voice, to let them know that, never forget that day, that we're all Americans, we're all in this together, and a lot of times, this political climate has us at each other's throats, but just know that, you know, there, there are other people out there that want to do harm to us as Americans, so let's look to unite and stay together as, as a, as a nation. And with that, I'll yield my time back.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I actually had an opportunity to sit with Mr. Pennman and went through the council office today. It was pretty interesting. We were able to talk about a lot of things, and looking forward to a nice transfer of power to this office. If we have one more election, then he's unopposed, but yeah, it's going to be nice. I'm telling you that much. We, I want to thank everyone that contributed, went out and played a part of all the 9/11 remembrance on Sunday. It was overwhelming. There was a lot of fire department activity, and all the members that went out and stood along all the roads for the drive-bys. It was outstanding. It was great attendance, as always. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Giannigordano.
Thank you, Counsel President. I too want to remember 9/11, 21 years on Sunday. I had family members in New York. I had family members who were on the fire department in New York, and a member that went back after the towers came down. I had family members that had to get all the way back out to Long Island. Some of them rode bikes. I remember that. Remember wondering what happened to, you know, what was going on with them, and worried to death. A lot of people passed away. I did know a few people that actually passed away in the towers, too. So, growing up in North Jersey, it did have a lot of people that lived in the area, so I'm glad, I don't want to ever forget, and I hope nobody ever does. On better note, I want to congratulate Mike Griffith, Brad Stover, George Robertson, on the, on the opening of their new office on Main Street, Canvas Bank Title in Escrow. We did the ribbon cutting last Thursday. A couple other council members were there, and Counsel President. And then the Beller Town Commissioners voted to appoint Eddie Hopkins to the position of Town Administrator on Monday. I look forward to working with Eddie. I actually saw him today driving down, and so we're going to try to get together in a week or so, once he gets settled in, so I do look forward to that. I also, myself, Council President Vincendi, Hartford, visit Hartford Annual Meeting today, and I want to thank Matt Scales for continuing where Greg Pizzuto left off, and there's a lot of exciting events coming to Hartford County. And then something else pretty close to me, it's going to be National Hispanic Heritage Month, begins on October 15, and I'll go to, I'm sorry, begins on September 15, and we'll go to October 15, to recognize the achievements and contributions of Hispanic-American champions who have inspired others to achieve success. And my girlfriend, Graciela, is from Peru. So, thank you very much, Counsel President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Giannigordano. And Mr. Schrude.
Thank you, Counsel President. I had an opportunity to attend the virtual Hartford County pre-tour transportation meeting with MDOT, and continue to advocate for improvements of road, road safety in District D. And the, the next meeting will be September 26, the actual tour meeting, and that will be held here that day. Also want to congratulate Eagle Scout Alex Gutovich from Troop 238 of Hickory, who celebrated his Court of Honor Ceremony last Thursday evening. Just an incredible young person. We're so lucky to have such great scouting in Hartford County, and those that get behind them, the scout leaders and volunteers that, and families that get behind them. They really are our future. Also attended Robinson-Stover and Canvas Back Title Escrow, their new office here on Bel Air. And lastly, or not quite lastly, the Black Horse 4-H Club hosted an All You Can Eat Spaghetti Dinner Friday at Citizens Volunteer Fire Company, and those proceeds went to the Archer family of Powsville, who lost their farm, if you'll remember it last, Father's Day, on June 12. And I echo all the sentiments about 9/11. It's, every day, I just, every 9/11, I just watch the TV and just remember, like, you can remember where you were and seeing those events, and each time, it does, it just hits you there. I know we're, we're never going to forget. It's just, it's just too real. Actually, it feels like yesterday because of, you know, just how horrendous it was, you know? I know we'll never forget, but you, you all said it much better than me right then, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schrude. Councilman Wagner?
Yeah, Councilman Schrude, you're absolutely correct. I mean, 21 years ago, it seems like it was just in the rearview mirror by a couple of months, you know? It's, it's clear, and everybody who did experience that, it's clear in everybody's mind, the great loss that day and the attack that was on our, our soil here, and hopefully that, you know, we won't forget, but hopefully generations to come will, will learn about it, understand, and not forget it as well. And on another note there, I know it's a sister county to Hartford County, but we need to at least remember the, the friends' family, the student friends, and the teachers, and everybody who was involved with the family in Cecil County that were all tragically died this past week. That was, you know, you don't know what the circumstances are, you don't know what somebody's going through, and this goes back to what I said last Tuesday, when we were talking about mental, mental health, and, and the, you know, the resources are out there, and, you know, all you got to do is reach out to it, and, you know, it's, it's a dirty shame that a family had to perish in the way that they did, but we'll keep them in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Bueller.
Thank you, Counsel President. I too share in the sentiments regarding 9/11. You know, that day, we lost, what was it, 2,996 lives? But the number of people that were affected, I mean, this was just felt across our country, and it was tragic. And I know we'll, like Councilman Wagner said, we'll all remember it. I know exactly what Gene and I were doing, where we were. We were in Rehoboth, at a condo, getting ready to go to the beach, and we never made it to the beach that day. So let's never forget. Last week, at council meeting, Mr. Paul Filacci asked a question regarding the three parcels of land that was placed in the enterprise zone in 2017. And the answer to your question, yes, I did speak with a number of residents, and I did hand out literature, and I never spoke with the owners or the developers prior to the vote, and I'm really researching my records, because I don't think I've ever spoke to them at all. And just in looking back at the records when it comes to properties that were placed in the enterprise zone in my district, I can only recall one owner that I spoke to, and that was after the property was placed in the enterprise zone. Just don't do that. There's no need to speak to them. So, and one other thing I'd like to address. I've been getting a number of calls regarding Abingdon Woods. Now, a lot of my constituents, of course, are affected by Abingdon Woods. But to clarify to all of those out there, Abingdon Woods is not located in District F, is actually located in District A. Thank you, Counsel President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Buella. And just a quick note from me. First of all, I truly do appreciate all your comments for 9/11 and stand with you solidly on that. But also, wanted to just let you know, Councilman Johnson, the administration's already sent a message, and they welcome all of us to be a part of that tax credit. So Charlie, make record of that. And with that, agenda item 17, comments and input from attending citizens. Do you have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. President. I believe we have seven this evening.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Ken Shannon. I live at 2044 Park Beach Drive in Perryman. It's Perryman. I have no issue stating my address. I'm proud to be from Perryman. I'm wearing a 3P Coalition hat for Protect Perryman Peninsula. I'm speaking for myself in regards to unwanted and inappropriate industrial development in Perryman, and the proposed Mitchell property development. According to the post office, my address is in Aberdeen, but I actually live in Perryman. A lot of people don't know there is a Perryman. The Giant Real Estate Development Company, CBRE, produced a list of warehouse, mega warehouse, freight terminals in Hartford and Cecil Counties. They showed 28 of the buildings in Aberdeen, but when we analyzed the addresses, turns out 15 of them are actually in Perryman. The 15 buildings, buildings in Perryman accounted for over 9 million square feet of total space. There's twice as much warehouse, mega warehouse, and freight terminal square footage in Perryman than Aberdeen. In fact, almost half of all the warehouse, mega warehouse, and freight terminals square footage in Hartford County is in Perryman. Now, an out-of-county developer wants to build 5.2 million more square feet of freight terminals on the Mitchell Farm in Perryman, and the county council sits by quietly, almost like you've never heard of Perryman. You had an opportunity to override the county executive's veto of the moratorium on the Mitchell property development, and no one on the council said a word. Mr. President, may I address the representative from District F?
No, you may not.
That's disappointing. Perryman is in District F, and we had and continue to have an expectation that our representative on the county council will act in the best interest of Perryman. But just like in this meeting, he says nothing and does nothing to help Perryman. There is a candidate in the upcoming general election for District F who will act in Perryman's best interests. Jacob Bennett recognizes that the people of Perryman have been...
Mr. Shannon, there is no campaigning in this chamber. So if you have something else to say, you're more than welcome.
Mr. President, I looked at the rules before I prepared my speech, and I did not see any rule like that. Can you please tell me which rule that is?
Mr. Kearney.
There, there's no campaigning on any county-owned property.
Mr. Filacci, he'll address Mr. Shannon through an email, but you will not do any campaigning in this chamber.
Good night.
Good night, sir.
Ron Stucinski, followed by Holly McComas.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Ron Stucinski, 319 Marina Avenue, Aberdeen, Maryland, Perryman Peninsula. I had a speech prepared tonight, but I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, but I would like to remind everyone that the elections are coming up, the general election in November. And I think, it's, I guess, without knowing this ruling, I'm asking the council president, and next time, when we're here next week, if we could get the exact wording on what this ruling is, I'd really appreciate it, just so we know. Other than that, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Stucinski, and Mr. Kearney will send that out in the next day or so. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. President. The citizens and resource, I'm sorry, Holly McComas, 1826 Park Beach Drive, Perryman.
Thank you, ma'am.
The citizens and resources of this great county are at risk with another proposed freight distribution center. The proposed, I'm sorry, the purpose of hydrology study completed by the MDE in 1997, and the source water assessment done in October of 2000, was to protect the groundwater supply from chemical contamination. In 1992, analysis of the water from two Perryman wells concentrate, had a high concentration of TCE that exceeded federal standards, and in 1994, the water of many of the wells exceeded the maximum nitrate levels for drinking water. TCE is known as a forever chemical, carcinogen, toxic to the central nervous system, liver, immune system, and reproductive process in both males and females. The 1997 report also references a report by CH2M Hill, which outlines a plan with recommendations for the county, and the October 2000 assessment states, quote, "New development may introduce additional potential contaminant sources to the water. It will increase the amount of paved surfaces in the area and may reduce the recharge to the wells." This is why 3P has been repeatedly asked for an update of these studies and assessment of the Perryman wellheads, because nothing has been done to make, make these changes. In March 9, 2003, an article in the Baltimore Sun, county council president Robert Wagner stated, "It is, the study is about 10 years old, and we have done nothing with it." The article also went on to say that a proposed update wellhead protection program would seek to ensure water quality by controlling development allowed by the wellhead area. We are now almost 20 years out, and nothing has been done. I can tell you what has been done to further jeopardize the water study. Over 12 million square feet of freight distribution center impervious coverage has been added to the Perryman area alone. That's not counting any area outside of the Perryman area. This ridiculous number does not include, I'm sorry, parking areas where trucks sit leaking fuel, oil, hydraulic fluids, while sitting over the wellheads. Again, every square inch jeopardizes the recharge of the wellheads and puts safe drinking water at risk of contamination. Simply overlaying an enterprise development zone to skirt around the MDE requirements does not ensure safe drinking water for the county. You have a responsibility to update these reports and stop further development until those studies are complete for our health. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our last speaker this evening is Brittany Russell.
Somebody else sign up beside her?
Excuse me, sir?
I apologize. Yes.
I have a question. Somebody sign up besides.
We do have two more.
Good evening, council. My name is Brittany Russell. My address is 1828 Park Beach Drive, Aberdeen, Maryland, Perryman. I want to talk a little bit about District F. District F encompasses Abingdon, Crestwell, Riverside, Bellcamp, Perryman, Aberdeen, the Aberdeen portion of APG, as well as Haverdy Grace. It is made up of over 44,000 people, including men, women, and children. We have doctors, lawyers, teachers, engineers, parents, military personnel, police officers, retail workers, social workers, nurses, and truck drivers, and students, just to name a few of us. But more than that, we are the people of Hartford County, and we deserve the same rights as those other members of Hartford County, and representation that is committed to ensuring that this happens. We deserve someone fighting tooth and nail to protect us, to provide us with safe roads, proper infrastructure, clean air to breathe, and clean water to drink. Our children deserve safe bus stops and playgrounds within our community. We deserve representation that works to make our community better, and that takes accountability, and that takes action. Mayor Bill Martin, at one point, proposed redistricting so that representatives lived in their local community. And I believe if our representative lived in our local community and faced the obstacles that we faced, changes would happen. District F needs change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Whalen, followed by Paul Filacci.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Vincetti, and council members. Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland, 21015. I don't attend every council meeting, but I try to watch many during the week after the fact. The one thing I am pleased that the council continues to open every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and an opening prayer. I hope that always is the case. Tonight, I'd like to respond to some comments made in these chambers by citizens regarding COVID-19. They said things such as, "The vaccine is a poison. It's experimental. I'll never put it in my body." "The vaccine's been a failure. It's killing our most healthy citizens. There's huge increase in deaths of students and athletes, 20 to 21. There are more COVID cases of vaccinated than unvaccinated people. I'll never wear a mask or consider being vaccinated. All of this is against my freedom and rights." First of all, I disagree with all those statements. Second, it's a personal choice to be vaccinated or not be vaccinated, and I respect one's choice, but I don't have to agree with it. Third, I thank God that a vaccine was discovered and produced for containing the COVID-19 pandemic. I would hate to think where we would be if there was no vaccine. Fourth, I thank all those who were vaccinated and continue to be vaccinated. I've heard so many stats and numbers, but the ones that always stood out the most to me, and I rounded these off, 1.2 million confirmed cases in the state of Maryland. 1.1 million of these cases are 92% were ages 0 to 69. The balance are 8% were ages 70 and up. However, there's 15,000 confirmed deaths from COVID. 10,000 of these deaths were people aged 70 and up. That represents 67%. So as old folks, we don't get COVID as much as the younger one, but when we do, one out of three of us die. Let me conclude with this. People who are vaccinated can still get COVID-19. It's been a proven fact. I don't argue with that. I don't argue with that. There's no guarantee that when you get a shot, you'll never get COVID. But here's the important part. It's been proven that when people do get COVID, they're much less likely to experience severe symptoms than those people who are unvaccinated. I believe vaccinations are a critical tool for containing the COVID-19 pandemic. It's still with us, and it's going to be a threat to our well-being. COVID-19 vaccines have proven to be highly effective, and they greatly reduce the risk of severe illness, hospital, and deaths. Don't relax. Get a vax.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. I'm not sure, did she call me?
I did, Mr. Filacci, before Mr. Bill Whalen.
Okay, sorry. Paul Filacci, Perryman, Maryland. Address is 3020 Marina Avenue. I'm gonna talk about enterprise zones again. Hartford County's enterprise zones in Aberdeen, Haverty Grace, and Edgewood-Jappa area are designated to encourage the creation of well-paying jobs, ensure retention, and spur expansion of resident businesses, promote the development and occupancy vacant, underutilized land and buildings. The minimum job requirement, or pay for the minimum job requirement, is 150% above minimum wage. Minimum wage in Maryland is 1,250, so that's just 1,875 an hour. So my question to anyone on the council is, do you think 1,875 is a good-paying job, a well-paying job? That's the minimum requirement for an enterprise zone in Hartford County. So that was my question. Maybe I can get that answered next week. I know what enterprise zones have brought to Perryman and Aberdeen is it's brought more traffic, trailer, traffic, trailer traffic. It's reduced response times, emergency response times. It's put our drinking water at risk, and has also caused more pollution to the Bush River. So I, the people of Perryman and District F do not want expanded enterprise zones. We want reduced enterprise zones. So I'm not sure who you talked to in the Perryman and the District F, but I haven't talked to anybody that wants to expand, other than the owners of the enterprise zones. Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Are you sure?
I am positive.
With no one signed up, this meeting is adjourned.